Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Economic and Cultural Development Meeting, the 11th day of June 2024. So today we have in attendance Mayor Harding, Deputy Mayor John Eick, Deputy Chair Cullen, and councillor Andrew Antonelli. I'll pass on to councillor Cullen for the acknowledgement of country.
Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners of the custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures, and stories of proud peoples.
Thank you. Are there any declarations of interest in the matter on the agenda today? No? Business outstanding, no? Any? Okay, we'll go over to the officer's report. So item number one on the agenda is City of Ipswich Economic Update. Do we have any questions for the relevant officer? No? Oh, okay. So we'll get that officer up. If you can just state your name and your title.
Good morning, Dan Heenan, Economic Development Manager.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Heenan. Morning. How are you this morning? So where do we get the data from? And can, I'm particularly interested in the growth in certain industries, and particularly who are the major players that have brought that growth?
Yeah, great. Thank you. Good question. With respect to the data, council pays for a subscription through ID Consulting, and it's a platform that's publicly available called Economy ID. Anyone can access it. And it takes, so ID Consulting basically takes data from a range of sources, from, I can't remember the exact name, but NIA is one. We've got the Census, they take data from there. So the QGSO, there's a few different data sources, and they helpfully collate that data and then present it in a form that's really easily digestible and able to be, you know, interpreted, analysed, and pulled apart. So it's a really good source, and certainly something I'd encourage you to have a look at if data's your thing. I think with respect to the growth component, the headline is that we've pushed through the $13 billion mark, which is, you know, impressive. But I think critically for me, I guess my observation is the economy grew 6.8% over the past 12 months. And when you then compare that to our neighbours, Gold Coast, Logan, Morton, all less or around half of that amount, it's quite impressive, to be honest. I've spent a little bit of time trying to get to the bottom of why. Why are we growing that much more than anywhere else? And to be honest, it's pretty consistent when you actually go through all of the industries, when you go through the export data, you go through all the bits and pieces. Yeah, it's growing consistently across the board. There isn't sort of one stat or dataset that you can point to that really sort of explains that well. It's just growing consistently across the region in all sectors.
Great, thank you. And any more questions?
Yeah, just to follow up on that. I mean, obviously, I mean, from reading the report, I get the impression that particularly with the, I think it's the category called Public Administration and Safety, which includes defence, clearly where the defence industries are doing a great job, Rheinmetall, Tasman Aviation, et cetera. They appear to be picking up quite a bit of that, the chunk of that growth in that field. But I'd be really interested if you're able to find out at some time as to where in the manufacturing area all this enormous growth has come from, because that's, that's obviously an industry that struggles in Australia, and we're kicking enormous goals in the manufacturing area. So it would be good to find out exactly which particular companies, where they're situated, and all those sorts of things, just for a future committee, perhaps.
Very happy to do that.
Any further questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Heenan. Okay, so I move the report. Do I have a second? Thank you. Open for discussion?
If I can, Chair. I think it's really great to see Ipswich's economy continuing to go from strength to strength, reaching $13.73 billion. As Mr. Heenan said, this is a growth of 6.8%, or 818 mil. And I'll just compare that to our neighbours Logan, which grew by 3.5%. And the overall Queensland growth rate was 2.4%. So when you compare our 6.8% to 2.4%, it does show the amount of growth. We can make anything here in Ipswich, in our heritage and going forward from first railways to fifth generation fighter aircraft jet engines. So it's great to see manufacturing continuing in leaps and bounds with our export industry with $2.7 billion of our overall exports, which reached $7.2 billion. But I think it's also really important to note, to see that 384 business GST cancellations occurred, which is likely due to a multitude of reasons that it is tough for many businesses. Also, with its interest rate hikes of the last 18 months and so on. So we just need to be really aware that many businesses are doing it tough, despite the growth that's happening. And I think it's really important for us in our partnerships with the chambers and in our own dealings to be cognisant of that. Local jobs are continuing to be created with an increase of 5.6% since last year, with a total of over 93,000 jobs in Ipswich. So, look, I think it's imperative we look at this and make sure that council's doing all it can to make sure we are identifying opportunities, policy improvements, attracting new businesses, and supporting our established businesses to thrive. So overall, our city continues to prosper as we grow and remain a very competitive city in the South East Queensland to work with and play.
Thank you. Councillor Antonelli?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate exactly what the mayor said. As a city of our size, and yes, we are one of the major cities in Queensland, but, you know, humble beginnings and the like, but we're punching above our weight. And certainly, as I said before in the questioning to the officer, industries such as the defence industries have been probably replacing in many respects some of our traditional industries such as mining and the like, which is long gone, of course. But we're also obviously continuing to kick goals in the construction sector with our growth. So, yeah, I think it's just, it's a great report to read. It's a great outcome and very pleasing result.
Yes, I concur with that analysis. I just wanted to also add to it that these figures are for the 30th of June 2023. So it'd be great to see what we're actually tracking to for this current financial year. So if there's no other further discussions, I'll put it to the vote. All in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Thank you. So we'll go to our second item, which is Spark Ipswich Festival 2024 Preview. Do we have any questions? Okay, could I have the relevant officer? Thank you.
Good morning, Carly Gregory, Manager of Marketing and Promotions.
Morning. Councillor Cullen?
Hi, Kelly. Just reading the report, and I see there's a number of Ipswich Council-owned entities in the report, and I just wanted to know whether or not their input financially is in the overall?
Yes, so the budget that I've put in this is exactly what we're spending, as in council, on Spark Ipswich this year, correct? So obviously, there are different budget lines. We are not using the entire budget line that is in our financial budget for Spark this year. At the moment, it's under because of some of that sharing of resources.
No, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further, Councillor Antonelli?
Yeah, so just coupling on to that question. So at the end of the festival, will we receive a report with a breakdown of what the external sponsors have provided, be it monetary in kind and the like?
Yeah, so I think in a budget presentation recently, I had for each festival the revenue, or, you know, be it sponsors, grants, that kind of investment that we have in the festivals. So we're really transparent about that. Usually, the review reports that we've done on the festivals focus on our investment versus return on that investment, so the economic impact report. But if that's something that you'd like included, we can absolutely do that.
Yeah, I think it would be great, good to give recognition where it's due.
Totally.
So obviously, we had a count of last year's festival, 82,000. How did we, other than the events that are obviously housed in the Civic Centre and the like, how are we actually doing counts of the open air events?
So for all of events across the city, so whether we sponsor them or produce them, we use, and we go to Tinder for this, a company called IER. They are very good at what they do in events. They're recommended by people like Tourism and Events Queensland. So the reason we use suppliers like that is because it's very reputable, it's credible. They provide really easy to digest data in an infographic for, you know, ourselves or users, and then detailed commentary. So in things like the festival, like Delight, that's outdoors, you know, there's no entry fee, that kind of data. They actually do on-the-ground interviews, counters, in things like the Nicola Street precinct. We have people counters. So we give them that data, and they use algorithms, you know, to give us an average and those kind of things. So everything from people counters through to interviews and the data that we get from every venue for the festival.
So with respect to the interviews they conduct, what sort of information are they getting from them? Are they getting, you know, personal details? I'm just thinking, obviously, to declare the purpose of my question is to obviously continue to value add for those people who are obviously coming from outside the city to look at this event. So it's not just for Ipswich locals. We obviously want to make this a regional event, South East Queensland regional event. Just want to obviously look at the best ways to, again, promote other events to those people that are outside the city, et cetera.
Yeah, so Ipswich Festival is obviously the brand under which these festivals are produced. And we have an EDM, so we have subscribers to that. We obviously, obviously use the destination branding and that EDM. And look, for Ipswich, Spark Ipswich last year, we had about 15,000 of our attendees were from outside the region, which is phenomenal. We're looking to build on that. Those numbers are different at every festival from outside the region, but that is, that is our core focus. So we have lots of data, we have lots of free-form commentary as well, which is really, really useful for us as producers. And we're starting to build a profile of what those visitors to the region are looking for, what they've enjoyed, what they'd like improvements in. That's really useful for us, because sometimes that might focus on a food offering, and we're able to speak to local businesses to improve that for next time. Or sometimes it's fabulous feedback, and we're able to go to them and say, you know, the attendees and patrons have really enjoyed this experience, continue it. So it's very valuable. We do share it with teams across council and beyond, and we're going to continue to build that out.
And just with respect to food, are we actively engaging existing tenants within the Nicola Street precinct for those events that are there to hope that they remain open late at night?
Yeah, so.
Or the like?
I obviously took over the management of the Nicola Street precinct team mid-last year, so we've had it for about 12 months. Prior to that time, absolutely Nicola Street and the City Events team worked very closely together to produce things like Christmas and Spark. We've obviously brought the main hero installations of Spark into Darcy Doyle Place, between Limestone and Brisbane Street, which worked beautifully, I think, for businesses last year. And that was on the back of feedback about the other locations. We sit down with the NSP leasing and marketing team and our teams and Ipswich Central, so in economic development here. We do briefings with the tenants, whether that's top of town or in the Nicola Street precinct, continually. They have been fabulous, can I say, on school holidays and at festivals, at changing their offerings, theming it to suit. We've been trying price points, so price points for families, which is our core business, making it more cost-effective, and I think that's worked really well. Some of those businesses have then continued those deals because it drives patronage on an everyday basis. And yes, I think the ongoing challenge is just keeping them open to a time that includes all of the activations. So we're doing all we can to support.
Oh, good. And look, I know that we only just decided chairs for relevant committees and the like, but is it, is it possible for the chair to be recognised in the programme as well? The chair of the relevant committee being councillor Augustine?
Yeah, do you mean in the programme?
In the, I see the programme. Obviously, the mayor's message, but, you know, the usual practice has been in the past to have a mayor and chair.
Happy to do that. Sometimes there, it does get quite squishy, I would say, in the thing, because sometimes we have state government funding, or, you know? So we just work it around that, but absolutely. Obviously, this programme went to print prior to that time, so we couldn't this time round.
No problems. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. No more, no more questions? Oh.
I see we've got a lot of names in there that are locals, which I think is fantastic. And I just wanted to make sure that a lot of the people we're using to help promote this and are Ipswich locals as well, local businesses, local entities, supporting them?
Absolutely. I mean, everything we do is about reflecting the people and the places. That's what we're really proud of, but taking them to a new audience. So I think really importantly, especially for the artists, and Spark is an arts and culture festival, for us, this is about seeing these people, not just as individuals, but as arts practices and building those. We have lots of art agents and producers and investors that come to this festival. And we absolutely know that for something like Delight, artists have absolutely had other commissions come from this, or significant works been sold after it. So that's our intent.
And I think you do, I think you do a great job as well. I think it's a fantastic event.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
The team works really hard. It's absolutely a collaborative effort, though, so we just need everyone to advocate it. And I can't miss this opportunity. Spark is amazing, but we're in the middle of Festival of Horsepower, and there are still two weeks left, and the weather has turned it on for winter nationals. So there are great things coming in the next few weeks, including Ipswich Cup, Two Days of Thunder, and the like, and the Marburg Pacing Association obviously have their events. So we're just great, it's great to see, we're right in the midst of it, and people are enjoying the city.
Doing a great job. Thanks, Carly.
Sorry, I still had.
Sorry, Miss Gregory. Thank you, Mayor Harding.
Thank you, Miss Gregory. And I note for Spark is probably the biggest investment we make.
Absolutely.
As a council in this, it is our annual art and culture festival. Could you just outline some of the, obviously, we always change things up a bit. What do you think some of the new highlights are?
So we've obviously got, you know, the events, the installations, experiences that people love, like the Common People Dance Project, you know, the Feature Artist on Delight, Little Day Out, which we're famous for, you know? Really one of the nation's first children's arts festivals, which is phenomenal. This year, though, it's been great to see some of our partners kind of step up and want to reinvent things for the festival and add other offerings. And they include the Teddy Bear's Picnic, Everything Old is New Again. I was saying to the team, oh, I can't remember that since I was a child. So it's back at the Queensland Museum Rail Workshops, which is great, and Circuit. I think this one is really key. We've obviously worked with the Creative Industries team and the Art Gallery on this, sought state government funding, which is fabulous, to really help our local restaurants and businesses who want live music but don't want to pay exorbitant agent fees, want that money to go direct to local musicians and artists, and actually capacity build those artists, so they know how to put a rate and market and how to promote themselves. So that circuit is what that's all about. It will also encourage people who are out and about to visit those locations to see live music in our city. We have another RADA-funded project in A World of My Own, which will be fabulous again to see that funding of local artists. And probably my personal favourite, The Berrels. I have been begging my team to get The Berrels for the last two years in Ipswich. This is a story of a local boy who has done so well. In Patrick Dwyer, he's really going places with his comedy act. I'm sure his mum, Anita Dwyer, will sell out the show on her own. I've seen it around. There is a beautiful pageantry-style, you know, 70s, 80s menu to boot that goes with this, some horrendous cocktail that's bright blue and you shouldn't drink. And they're selling merchandise as fundraiser at this as well. So it's great for us to see artists that have done well nationally and internationally want to come home and say thank you to all of those that sort of helped in their journey. So really impressive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I just wanted to, yeah, reiterate what everyone said, which was great. So I'll move the report. Do I have a second? Councillor Antonelli? I'll open it to discussion. Yeah, Mayor Harding?
Our city events plan is again showing councils delivering a regionally significant festival that welcomed 82,000 people last year and generated 1,700 bed nights for our tourism operators. And it comes at a time when usually things are a little bit slower in winter, so it's been just injection for our community. Spark Ipswich will again run over 11 days, ride around the city, celebrating the people, places, arts, and culture of Ipswich. I'm very keen to get along to many of the new events planned for this year, including the Teddy Bear's Picnic, Circuit, The Music in Many Places, A World of My Own. And I already have my tickets from The Berrels, that Anita Dwyer has made sure I've bought. And her son, Patrick Dwyer, he was a St Eddie's old boy, is part of that. I saw them do this a couple of years ago at Banshee's, and just, it's an absolutely hilarious thing. And I can't remember the full menu, but I do remember that Vouluvance was on the menu, so very much a retro menu. And obviously, a personal fact, the Grown Up and Me crochet one is what I'm looking forward to seeing as well. And I see there's even a sink thing where you can do some, I think, tattooing on some synthetic skin as well, so something for everyone. Spark Ipswich is very important to our community, and a lot of events are free, many is accessible to all. It enriches our cultural fabric, provides a platform for local artists to showcase their work, but most importantly, it brings our community together. So thank you very much for all the work that the team had and everyone who's involved with it, local artists, your connections and local businesses who are sponsoring. Thank you very much for your support and looking forward to it next month.
Thank you, Mayor Harding. I would just like to add that, just listening to Miss Gregory talk, you can just feel the passion and you can see why the programme and the events are just so successful. So I'm really looking forward to Spark this year, on the 4th of July it starts. So well done to your team and everyone that's been involved in this. So I'll put it to the vote, all in favour? That's unanimously carried. Thank you. Move on to item three, which is the Quarterly Event Sponsorship and Ticket Allocation Report. So do we have any questions from the floor? I do, so if the relevant officer could come up?
Good morning, Carly Gregory, Marketing and Promotions.
Thank you, Miss Gregory. Miss Gregory, my question is, excuse my ignorance. I just want to know, I'm just noting in the recommendations that the impact study plus the ticket allocation weren't complete. Can you just tell me what that's all about?
So just in the last report, I spoke about the IER Economic Impact Reports. Some quarters, no one's asked for those, or we've. Some quarters, no one's asked for those, or we've got one from last year, so they're not required. It would be very rare for us to have a ticketing, a ticketed allocation in our contracts as well because of our gifts, benefits and hospitality. The only ones I can think of off the top of my head would be at CMC, there is a small allocation for capacity building. So we take people on tours who are producers or events that we'd like to attract to the area. So often there will be no ticket allocations as part of it. But usually IER, yes, every quarter. So if there is one that we've granted in that quarter, it would be on the report.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. All right, so I'll move the report. Do I have a second? Councillor Cullen, discussion? No discussion. So I'll put it to the vote. Everyone in favour? That's passed unanimously. Thank you. Item four on the agenda is the Nicholas Street Precinct, May 2024 Retail Sub-Project Steering Committee Report. So before we just go forward with this, I would just like to first give a shout out to councillor Marnie Doyle, who was the chair of the Nicholas Street Precinct. Under her watch, there were some, some much-needed important decisions. Under extreme pressure, she handled the role with pride and dignity. And I can only hope that I emulate those characteristics going forward. So thank you, councillor Doyle. I'm always a glass-full sort of person, so I'm looking forward to how we can influence the future and here and here's to an amazing and fruitful Nicholas Street Precinct. So do we have any questions for the relevant officer? No. So I'll move the report. Do I have a second? Councillor Cullen? I'll open for discussion. Any discussion? Thank you, Mayor Harding.
Cheers. I'll reiterate your recognition of councillor Marnie Doyle. Her last four years was, you know, with Covid, coming out of administration, showed an amazing amount of leadership. Her professional acumen, integrity and driving it forward wasn't, wasn't easy. And I think you were, you know, how many caricatures were there of you, councillor Doyle? In that, in that time and making decisions and driving the project forward to, to the benefit of the ratepayers and residents of Ipswich. So thank you very much for, for doing that. And, you know, we're going to see even more fruits of that later this year with the, the opening of Hoyts and, and the Commonwealth Hotel.
Yeah, totally agree, totally agree. Any other further discussion? No. I'll put it to the vote. All in favour? That's carried unanimously. So we go to item five on the agenda, which is the Advocacy Advisory Committee Terms of Reference. Do we have any questions? No, so I'll move that report. Do I have a second? Councillor Antonelli?
I think, I think we have to name.
I do have to name them first. Am I going there first? Yeah, to have a substantive motion with the names there, so.
So I've moved this slot here first and then opened a discussion and then voted.
Yep, with the, the motions that you provided to the committee administration. All right. Okay, thank you. Yeah, this one was a bit of a tricky one. We had amendments very late on in the piece. So. Would you like to start by moving the?
Putting a motion for the chairperson for the Advocacy Advisory Committee?
Yeah, I'll move that the recommendation is that the membership of the Advocacy Advisory Committee be appointed as follows. The chairperson as Mayor Theresa Harding, deputy chairperson as councillor Marnie Doyle, members, myself, councillor Dave Cullen. Item B is that the Advocacy Advisory Committee take on the purpose and the role of the existing advocacy steering group. C, that the Advocacy Advisory Committee Terms of Reference, as detailed in Attachment One, amended to reflect the details in Recommendation A and B above, be adopted. And D, that the advocacy for regionally significant program, projects, policy be amended to reflect the revised governance arrangements. So I move that report, all those recommendations. Do I have a second? Mayor Harding, open for discussion?
No discussion? Supporting this, and I know that membership can always change as people want to come in and out of, of these committees. But I'd say as Ipswich is representative to Australia's largest regional local government advocacy organisation, the Council of Mayor of South East Queensland. As recently as my board member appointment on the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Organising Committee. And I think it's also well-established in the networks within the Australian Government, the Queensland Government and business, as well as the Games delivery partners and decision-makers, that the mayor would head that, the advocacy of the city. I think it's really important, and I know we learnt this for those councils who were here last term, the importance of us working together, making sure that communication and collaboration is, is key. I know there was a couple of bumps in the road in 2020, but it's really important that we do work together for better outcomes. We've seen last four years, many projects start to move forward. And I wish to continue that momentum, noting our success so far has been built on the collaboration of all councillors. And if elected as chair, I'll be very supportive of continuing that approach and confident that we'll be successful in this space, working together and leading the charge and ensure that Ipswich takes full advantage of the economic, cultural and social benefits that our growth brings, but also the Games will bring to South East Queensland as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, this, is there any further discussion? No, so I'll put it to the vote. Everyone in favour? Thank you. That's carried unanimously. So there's no notice of motion, no matters arising, no other matters outstanding? No, so thank you. I'll close the meeting at 11:44 AM.
Chair, you might like to ask the